Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of Peter Township Council to order from Monday, September 12th, 2022. Mr. Lauer will call first.
Ms. Shanifeld?
I'm here.
Dr. Porosko?
Here.
Mr. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Steigel?
Here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the council meeting held on August 22nd.
So moved.
Second. The motion is second, any corrections? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carry six, nothing. Next will be the approval of the transcript from the public hearing held on July 25th concerning the 2022 budget.
I move we accept the transcript.
I'll second.
The motion is second, any corrections or additions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Six, nothing as well. Final item, item C will be approval of the transcript from the public hearing held on July 25th regarding the zoning ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion is second, any corrections or additions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carry six, nothing. Special reports, not seeing anything here, is that still the case? Next will be audience comments, this will be an opportunity for a member of the audience to address council on a non-agenda item for up to five minutes. Is there anybody there? Yes. Is the sheet up there for signing?
Yeah.
If you could just put your name and address.
My name is Maureen Jones and I live on East Nick Murray Road. I just want to comment, I'm really becoming concerned and alarmed at the amount of development that we currently have going on, not only in Peters Township, but also our neighboring communities. If you go down, we have Sugar Bowl, we have Royal States, so all that traffic now is going to be filed over to, most likely to Beavow, into a very busy intersection already, at the intersection of Beavow and Thompson Hill in East Nick Murray. Then there's two new plans going on down Denisha Road from Nottingham, and then we have that new one going up on Thomas Road also, that's up in that area. And a lot of this is now either going to file through Beavow, Denisha Road, or it's going to go down to Waterdame, but again, that all files into Peters. And we really have not done much with our infrastructure. We're on a lot of two-lane country roads, and people are going right just being back there. There's no way to slow them down. You have still wildlife that roam the township, and I've noticed there's been an increase with a lot of road kills that's going on. So I'm just concerned, I know you can't stop it, but is there any way that we could slow it down, or ensure that maybe the amount of homes that are being built in this area? I mean, when we have plans that are going up proposing 80,000, 90,000, 80,000 to 90,000 homes, residential areas, it just seems like we're just overwhelming our system that we're really not being prepared to handle the amount of traffic that's coming our way.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think there was another one. Oh, two women. I didn't know you both. She's the only one.
So my name's Maureen Kelly, I'm president of the Peters Township Library Foundation.
And I'm Sharkean Hannah, I'm the vice president of the foundation. So we're just here, we wanted to let you know, we, the foundation has been around for six years, I'm not sure if you're aware of us, but we're here to kind of augment all the amazing things that the library already does. We're the fundraising, the volunteer arm, and we have a program that's now the fifth year called Novel November, where we bring a bestselling, internationally recognized author to the community. This year will be Andy Weir, who's written, he writes science fiction, you might be familiar with the movie The Martian, that starred by Matt Damon, that was his book that was adapted to film. Paul has attended, I think, every Novel November.
Yes.
And so we're just really here hoping that you will all come to Novel November. Tickets are on sale now, we've already sold almost 200 tickets, our VIP is almost sold out. And we also have opportunities, if you're interested in volunteering, I think it would be, it's just a great community event. The high school sings. We'd love to see you there. We want it to become even more of a community event, is one of our core strengths.
Have you reached out to like the school board or anything to have Shelley Belcher send out an email, blast about it?
Yes. They've been very, very, I mean, working with the school, it's just been a work for both them and us, and this year more than any, we've had really more students become involved, the librarian, they were working with the librarian, and they say love here. So it's really been a collaborative effort, and a really great community event. So we're very much looking forward to it.
What's the date of the event?
November 3rd, Thursday, November 3rd, 7:00 p.m. And it's at the high school. The high school, we're not organizing this yet, but the auditorium may be under construction. If it is, we're going to be in the gymnasium. So, either way, we're at the high school. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? Okay, seeing nobody else, we'll move into unfinished business, doesn't look like there's anything there. So, new business first item will be authorization of an emergency purchase related to the storm sewer failure.
Yes, the Peters Township Purchase Manual has a provision that allows the manager to authorize emergency purchases. What was discovered based upon a report from one of the neighbors on Sand Creek Drive is that there was a sinkhole, and upon examination, what was found was that the storm sewer had collapsed and was crushed. And if you look at this storm sewer, it, there are three storm sewers that funnel into this, and so the volume of water that comes through that storm sewer is tremendous. And our concern was, given its condition, what potential harm there might be to those two adjacent homes. So on that basis, I authorized Mr. Zamidis to employ the services of a contractor for the purposes of replacing that pipe. Mark can give you a little update on where we are on that.
Well, Slu Sarsik Excavating, who we've used in the past on several storm sewer jobs, they've always been fair with us. We're out there today, they started, it was a tough day. It's a deep storm sewer, soil conditions are atrocious. We had a rainstorm right in the middle of it, so that kind of reinforced our decision. I'm glad we made this decision to do this emergency repair, because it was like the Nile River coming down that pipe today. So, I think the worst of it's over, there's about a 40-foot section that needs to be replaced, so they'll probably be working on it through the day tomorrow. And after that point, it'll be just some cleanup for a day or two. I would like to mention, the agreement that we have with Slu Sarsik is, they're going to provide equipment and labor, we're going to provide the materials and some transport. Public Works has been fantastic, they've been hauling stone back and forth, and we bought the pipe, you know, through the shake cog contract and everything, so it's kind of a cooperative effort at this point.
Now, Mark, did you guys scope the whole, the whole line?
Not the whole line. From that manhole that was shown up near Sand Creek, it goes down to another manhole just at the bottom of the page, and then it empties into a detention basin that we own along Hidden Valley Road. So we popped the man, the lower manhole, and the pipe is in good condition at the lower manhole. We just, we figured, we knew we had to replace it at the upstream section, so no use televising it, so we went back and luckily about 40 feet away from that upper manhole is a good section of pipe that we could tie into, so.
Is that, is that all that corrugated, or not?
No, it's plastic pipe.
What about the ones that feed into, that Paul was alluding to?
Plastic.
Plastic. So do we have any idea why it failed?
No. Late 90s development, so 20, 25 years old, not quite sure.
All right, so Paul, what do you need from us? You need us to?
Just the recognition from council that in fact I've informed you of this, so.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, six, nothing. Next item with new business will be approval for recording purposes of the Lutz family, or Lutz Farm Plan for Ted Taylor Builders.
So Mr. Taylor owns 26-acre parcel along Thomas Road, and is seeking approval of the final plan for the Lutz Farm Plan of Lots. The development consists of 43 residential lots, and is proposed to be developed in two phases. As you will recall, this plan first came to council in September of 2020, and at that time, council expressed concern about the plan that was presented to them, in that they wanted to see the two roads aligned to create a plus intersection, and that's what was shown in the preliminary plan, and that's what's shown in the final plan as well. The other concern was to make sure, given the strange configuration of how the two properties above it come together, that there was some accommodation to be able to allow that road to be extended. And so what shows on the preliminary plan, and what shows on the final plan, is a temporary cul-de-sac with a widened right-of-way at the top, so that the road can either go straight ahead, or make a right-angle turn. The proposed development is, having been done prior to the change in our ordinance that requires 24-foot cartways at this point, Mr. Zoo, in conversation with Mr. Taylor, have reached an agreement that for this portion that extends up towards the farm, that that will be done as a 24-foot road, as opposed to a road of a narrower width, which was actually permitted at the time when this preliminary plan was filed. So it's my recommendation that council approve this final plan, subject to the conditions recommended by the planning commission that are shown in my manager's report.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second, further discussion?
Well, I mean, this arrangement is a heck of a lot better than what we looked at a couple of years ago, so.
Paul, I got one question. That, can you zoom in on that temporary cul-de-sac?
The one in the bottom?
The one at the bottom. Well, there was only one temporary cul-de-sac.
I guess that's true.
So where, because I can't tell looking at it here. Where, okay.
Well, here, maybe this helps out better.
Thank you, thank you. So, why, as I'm looking at this, that temporary cul-de-sac takes out about a third of the backyard on that one lot there. Why don't we just require the developer to just pave what you have in there as where the road's going to go? Is it because the truck can't turn around?
Because at some point in time, when these houses are built, there'll be an expectation that there's snow removal on that street. When the truck comes up, you're going to force it to back down the street if there's not a temporary cul-de-sac there.
All right, I'm just asking, that's all. Because it seems to me like it's a waste of asphalt to do that, when you could just pave in that spur there, but all right.
Any further discussion from the council? Audience, any comments from the audience? Mr. Taylor? And?
Mr. Tuvor's winning.
When you're winning, you don't say anything.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six, nothing.
Congratulations.
Okay, next item will be resolution adopting the Peters Township Performance Management Policy.
I'm going to ask Mr. Tobet to speak towards to this. As council's aware, we've been having ongoing discussions about adopting the performance management policy for the township, and this work is largely spearheaded by Mr. Tobet.
Thank you, Paul. As we've discussed in workshop, previous workshop meetings, our intention here is to create more uniform, fair, and equitable performance management policy for our employees, starting obviously with our directors, our department heads, and working its way down through our assistant directors and other full-time employees. We didn't, at the time that we started to look at this, have something in place that allowed us to develop a performance plan, from that performance plan, create quarterly check-ins or in-cycle reviews, and then obviously wrap up that year-long process with a performance evaluation that would allow our employees, as well as our directors, a little more conversation and dialogue as we are progressing through the year. So, I know you've had a chance to review this policy, any questions that you have, I'm happy to answer them for you, but we would be looking to probably start this immediately in terms of setting our goals and objectives for our directors, so come January 1st, we've already developed those performance plans for those individuals.
Based on the text of the agreement and the resolution, are we rigidly fixing ourselves into the text of the process, or is that something that could be amended or worked on without having to come to council?
Oh, no, this is being adopted by resolution, so just like on the employee handbook, modifications of it will require us to come back to council and have it adopted by resolution.
I had a question. Isn't this, doesn't this go hand in hand in, or maybe this is the wrong part, but doesn't this go hand in hand with some set increases in salary? Because I see here it's talking about, a new hire performs adequately may reach the midpoint within 48 months of their hire date.
That, it, there are two things that you're being asked of, first tonight.
Is this the one?
That is not the one we're talking about now. But the two go hand in hand in the sense that the employee performance policy does have an impact on the employee handbook and what's provided there. So that's the change that would be in the employee handbook. It used to be that it said that you may reach that midpoint in two years, it's now saying that you may reach that midpoint.
It says she'll reach at least 90% of the midpoint within 24 months.
Yes.
But my question is, are we going to be giving salary bumps annually, and how are we going to be doing that? Are we going to be doing that the way we used to do it, or is this, is there a whole new scheme?
Well, what you're going to be doing is doing performance evaluations. So one of the problems with our system as it exists now, there's a pay range, and we hire in people in a pay range, somewhere in that pay range, generally below the market number. And each year, council authorizes an increase in that pay grade. This year, for instance, it was 2 and 1/4%. At the same time, what council has done for years and years is to authorize the township manager to do increases in that same range. So if you enter our pay grades, and you have been here forever, you will never move relative to the midpoint. What this tries to do is recognize people's performance based upon a various, an expressed set of goals and objectives, and give them an opportunity to receive an increase that is a reflection of performance, as opposed to simply an increase that occurs each year, that leaves them exactly where they started.
Well, I understand that, but like, wouldn't there be a situation, the way this is written right now? Like, you know, sometimes we have to pay a premium for a new hire because of the market.
Right.
So, like the building inspectors, was that what it was, we couldn't get? So we were paying way above what we ever anticipated paying. So if you do that for someone, and they came in for whatever job it is, and you have to pay them a premium, and they're already at, say, the midpoint of the range, or higher when you, you know, when they get hired, I mean, then what are you going to do? Then what are you going to do? Give them little teeny ones? I mean, that's not fair either.
But no, that's not what's going to happen, is what's going to happen, because again, you're, it's somewhere within this range. So you could be at the midpoint, the market rate for that job, or you could be above the market rate for that job. What you cannot do is get above the maximum amount. So what would happen is, these people, just like every other employee, and in this case, we're limiting to department heads to start with, would have a set of goals and objectives, and at the end of the year, their performance would be measured against those goals and objectives, and it would determine whether they receive any increase, a standard increase, or if in fact you performed above and beyond, an increase in addition to that.
Yeah, but I think, were you coming at it from looking at that midpoint, and being that that's being implemented every year, you're automatically, if somebody performs adequately, I would assume after 48 months will be at the midpoint. So if you keep pushing that midpoint up, it just seems like there's the potential for a very large salary increase at the two-year mark.
There will never be large salary increases with this, that will not happen. That will not, not just the way, if you look at the math of it, it's impossible for it to happen. So for instance, if I, if I was at the, because there's 20% gap between the midpoint and the top, if I was at that midpoint, and I was the stellar performer every year, I don't think I'd make it to the max in 10 years.
It'd be just after 10.
Yeah. And I'd have to be the stellar performer every year, and that's, that's not going to happen.
It's not a big motivation to keep good employees at this level, where we're at. So you're looking at level set it to the market, and then reward those who do well.
That's right.
And give the basic increase to those who do an average job.
It's as much recruitment and retention as?
And what we've never had a problem with is when people don't perform, that they are bypassed for an increase, or receive an increase less than what is the standard increase.
Yeah, it looks like the previous pay plan read that a hire, a new hire performs adequately shall reach 90%, which makes me believe that that's an automatic, but you're changing it to say may, so you still have the discretion of not letting somebody reach that 90%?
And it currently does read, I don't know what?
Well, what you wrote in your manager's report hasn't shown as shall.
It actually is may. That was something that council actually changed.
Okay.
Because we were far from being able to do that anyhow.
All right, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number 09-01-22, amending the Peters Township Employee Handbook. Second.
Can we motion in a second, any? Mrs. Merrill wants to address.
Yeah, I was going to say.
My apologies, Mrs. Merrill.
Okay. Mrs. Merrill, you're up.
Thank you. Let's skip right over the audience comments, there was the loser. One to Merrill, one to five, one and five. Thank you very much for letting me come and talk with you, which I know you were surprised while reading the new ones, or surprised, but I sent in a little bit of a commentary. First of all, Mr. Tobet, that's a nice, comprehensive plan, and I'm not in any way criticizing the work. I did have a couple of questions, and one of them goes back to what Mr. Curry was alluding to. I could see in the definition the difference between standard annual increase and the bonus. And when I read that, and I've read it a couple of times, it sounded as if you were basically proposing that everyone would get sort of a cost of living, unless they in fact were performing poorly. So that was one point I'd really like to know, and based on that, what kind of impact do you think this will have financially on the budget compared to last year? And you may not have that number now, but I think that's a really important thing for council to know, and for the public to know. I agree with Mrs. Shanifeld, we want to reward people who are doing a good job and going above and beyond. I'm not in any way disputing that, and we have a lot of really great employees here in the township. But I think you need to really quantify it, and I haven't seen that number. So that's one question I had. I did have a few other comments that were more about operational implementation, I did copy you, and it was just kind of clarification, when you were going to review people, a new person compared to what the probationary period was, things like that, that the general public probably doesn't necessarily worry about, but I do. The other thing I wanted to make a point about, and I don't mean to single him out, but this creates an expectation for council to actually evaluate the manager, and I wondered how you were planning to do that, because it's not spelled out as to whether, for example, the chairman and vice chairman would do it, or every council person would do it, or if the personnel appeals group would do it. And I think it would be helpful if the public knew how that was going to happen. The only other thing I did want to bring up was the idea of, you talked about getting input from other people, and I think if you're moving toward a peer review system, you need to quantify that, and you need to explain to employees how that's going to happen, and whether or not they're going to be able to hear. So again, it's a very comprehensive project, I appreciate the work you put in, but I do think we need to know the price tag, and a little clarification about some of the points of how it's going to be implemented. Thank you.
Paul, have you guys looked into the budget implications on that?
Not for 2024. I know we've discussed what 2023 will look like from a salary standpoint. Paul, I'm not sure if you want to help address this, but I would imagine that as we're going throughout 2023, prior to the budget season of '24, we should have somewhat of an idea of?
But the thing that I can tell you is that this will, particularly since this is being implemented strictly for department heads at this point, and, you know, one of my explanations to the department heads is that everyone should not expect that they are stellar performers and are going to receive increases that is above the standard. So I do not believe this is going to have a significant impact on the budget, particularly given how limited it is in terms of the number of people actually eligible for this next year, so.
Well, I can tell you that, you know, I read through the comments and observations that Mrs. Merrill was so kind to email to me, and, you know, this gives me a little pause to think that maybe we should table this and have the administration maybe look at some of these issues, and maybe we could tweak it now rather than tweak it later, and let's just get this right, and then know those types of numbers and what it would mean. I mean, that's the way I feel.
Do you have a problem with tabling it?
And have them, I mean, I assume you got her little memo?
Yes, we got it today.
And, I mean, I don't know, it just seemed to me, there's a lot of issues here that when we were in that workshop, we really didn't get into. And I'm thinking maybe, in light of her comments, we should just take a step back, put this on hold, and maybe you and Paul and whoever else should be taking a look at this to see if there are things that she's raised that maybe we should address, including like the price tag. I mean, I know maybe it might not be big, because we're only limiting this to the department heads, but, I mean, eventually, I would think that it's going to roll out into other positions, and let's just, I think we should just get the language right now rather than have to go back and make piecemeal amendments to this. But that's my thought, I mean, I don't know.
Well, that's in part why I asked the question to begin with, as to whether there was some flexibility to accommodate, you know, pending things being done by staff rather than council, but if it has to be done at the point in time that we adopt it, then I agree with you.
Yes, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. So anybody want to make a?
I'll make a motion that we table the resolution adopt, the issue pertaining to the resolution adopting the Peters Township Performance Management Policy in order to afford the administration to maybe review these issues that have been raised by Mrs. Merrill, and make some, if necessary, you know, adjustments or, you know, changes thereto, including financial impact to the budget. And I'd also move to table the amendments to the handbook, because they sort of go no pun intended, hand in hand.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That may be one of the longest motions we've ever had in front of council.
I can't wait to see how Cheryl writes that motion out.
Believe me, we won't look like anything I said, I know that. All right. Next item will be appointment of a Parks and Rec Board member to replace Mrs. Smith's position that she resigned from.
So I'm looking for direction, what you have in?
What you have in your docket is a list of individuals who have indicated an interest in serving in that position. Mr. Merrill has contacted me today and asked that his name be withdrawn from that consideration. But what I'm looking for, council's direction as to how to move forward.
Well, I was impressed with Mr. Pearl Mutter when we interviewed him for, I think it was what, the Library Board?
Yes.
And he was a close second on that appointment, so I would make a motion that we appoint Sam Pearl Mutter to the Parks and Rec Board.
Second.
Okay, we motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Why, so the normal process of this is to interview people, correct?
Sometimes, not always.
Not always. But I would say majority of the time, we do interview every candidate.
Well, we don't interview every.
Not every.
Usually whittle it down to three or four.
Right. I'm sorry.
So I mean, if there's three or four.
So I, I mean, I have to, you know, watch my brothers on this list here, but I think that picking one of the persons on this list without knowing who they all are and/or having some input from council wouldn't be the right thing to do. And I'm not saying that against Sam at all, because you're right, he did a great job in that interview process, but we don't know all these other people.
I was hoping we could see their resumes or whatever they submitted.
They're in the docket.
They're in the docket.
Yeah.
The problem, I mean, and I understand where you're coming from, and the problem is is that we have a pretty hefty schedule going forward. Don't, don't we have some budget workshops and things coming up?
That's one of the, one of the things on the docket.
It's every week between now and Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean.
It has not been unusual to have selected people from prior interviews that we all felt very highly about.
Well, we've had openings on, even on council, I mean, I don't think we interviewed, like after we did the first time, but like when we had another one, we just reappointed, I forget, it was Mike, Mike.
McKay.
Yeah, Mike McKay. I mean, we didn't, I don't think we re-interviewed, but I, I just don't see we're going to have the time. And, and I tend to agree with Mr. Cozer and, and that Mr. Pearl, Pearl Mutter, he was a very strong candidate for the Library Board, and that wasn't that long ago. I mean, I don't, I don't feel strongly one way or the other, I just, it's just a timing issue, but.
He's definitely shown himself to be passionate about parks. If you're a Woody's don't the dam.
There's a motion on the floor. Let's call a question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm recusing myself from.
So it will pass 4-1, 4-1-1. Sam Pearl Mutter to be appointed to the Parks and Rec Board. Item F will be your recommendation from the Planning Commission to, I guess, revisit the conservation residential and the mixed overlay, mixed residential overlay.
At the last meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission, they made a motion and passed a motion that you see here. And so what we intend to do as a staff is to do a couple of things. One, to have a discussion with each individual member of the Planning Commission to understand where they are with regard to these, these overlay zones. My impression is that it runs the gamut from wanting to tweak dimensional requirements, locations, to eliminating them. So we want to have an understanding of exactly where the Planning Commission's coming from. The other thing we intend to do, and we've started, is to visit all of the remaining properties that are listed for, in the overlay zones for the purpose of determining whether or not those, those zonings should be changed.
How many parcels are left?
There are actually quite a few, and I did bring that map with me.
I'll do a quick count. 20 plus.
And how many of those are surrounded by developments that are standard, single-family, half-acre lot?
Only, only one that I can really think of. But, but again, our intention is to go through these and, and provide council and the Planning Commission a description of the property and, and a recommendation concerning this.
I think it's important to let the public know too, that any pending plan that's, we have, that we're in receipt of, that this won't affect them, right? They're still operating under the existing.
Yes, yes. Until you're to the point where you can have a pending ordinance, these plans would move forward, so.
But that would not preclude one of those pending to agreeing to adopt the new revised plan.
That's correct.
We can't force them.
We cannot force them.
So I mean, I have, I was in support of, of what we developed and went out there with, but I've been very disappointed with the results of it, so I'm definitely an advocate for rethinking the.
And I share the same concerns as Mr. Lewis does.
One of the things that concerns me is we always, when we adopted this, and you were right, Mrs. Merrill, you know, when we adopted this, our always thought was it was going to be an overlay, an option, you know, that some, some of these developments would take that form. But as Mrs. Merrill so aptly predicted a few years ago, all the developments, it seems, are taking that form now. So, you know, we passed this with the idea of creating housing diversification, but we haven't, what we've done now is we've gone completely in the opposite direction, you know. It's, how many developments have we had come in since the overlay was adopted where they are standard half-acre lots?
Oh, there's been some.
Off the top of my head, there's been a couple. Fight Farm Plan Number Five is one.
Well, but that, you can't count that, Ed, because I mean, those are estate lots.
It was in an overlay. They chose not to use the overlay, so you can count.
Wow. Well, what, what?
Yeah, but they were limited to the number of houses they could put on that road anyway.
It was overlay, and they did not use it.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, you're speaking with the lawyer, Ed. Mr. Cozer, what you are correct about is the majority of plans that have come in, the majority of lots that have been approved have been, where the overlay district is available, have come in under the overlay district.
Which is what, you know, in reality, we would expect, because after all, we still do live in a capitalistic society, and, you know, builders are going to try to maximize their profit.
Well, I mean.
And cut down on their costs. It's obviously in those districts, obviously the, the cost of development is less because you have less streets put in, less infrastructure.
Less grading and.
Yeah.
I would just point out that I don't think that the, the overlay per se results in, in any more additional structures.
Oh, it doesn't.
It doesn't. And, and there are, and there are, and we did discuss benefits to having the overlay just because, you know, there would be more quality, open space, less, I guess, the, the lower land would be left in its natural state, be less roadage to maintain and stuff like that. But on the other hand, I mean, I'd have to agree that after our road tour, I, I think that I'm not happy with some of the, the overlay developments in the sense of how they, how they look, and I'm not real happy about the setbacks. I mean, they're just, it just looks awful.
Well, you know, and one of the, and it's not in the overlay district, it's in one of the original plans that was approved by council as a cluster development, Timberlake. And I always encourage people to go down and see that plan, particularly since it's now a mature plan. And if you, and if you look at that plan and understand that all those trees on all those hillsides are only there because that was a cluster development, in a conventional development, there would have been nothing left. And so I think there's problems, and I think that this needs to be modified so that it meets people's expectations. And again, what we're looking for is an opportunity to be able to come back to you with some recommendations that, to help that discussion along.
Very good, thank you.
And I think the other thing you need to look at, obviously, is the topography of these parcels. There probably are certain parcels that they have to be developed under the overlay because it's the slopage or whatever else. I mean, I think that's, we need to take all that into account.
Well, and I can tell you that, quite honestly, I think that's one of the discussions we need to have with the Planning Commission and council. You have a lot of your farmland is in, in these overlay, overlay districts. And, you know, if you know anything about farmland, the reason why it's being farmed as opposed to it being wooded, is that its topography may be undulating, but it's not as steep as those slopes are where you have these wooded properties. And, you know, to what extent do you want to remove the overlay zone from farmland? And I think that's a valid discussion that we want to have with council.
Do you, what do you need from us then, just to consent?
I just wanted to inform you of this, because I don't know to what extent the Planning Commission has communicated this, and I wanted you to be aware of it so that we have an opportunity to move forward. Our hope is to get back to you as soon as we can, so.
Okay.
Joe?
Can I speak?
Yes, sure.
I've been hearing a pretty vocal.
Make sure you write your name before you.
Pretty vocal Monori complaining about our overlay thing. I think if you were involved through this long process that we all went through a couple of times to get to this point, I think there's no doubt there are road pains. I think to throw it out totally is wrong. I think you guys just real quickly touch upon a lot of the really good reasons to keep it. I think we all know the setbacks is too close to the street. Can't get a car parked and somebody walk past the sidewalks. Side yard should be a little bit bigger. But it does help us on some of the remaining parcels that are difficultly challenging from a topography standpoint. And you can't blame the filters and developers from playing by your rules. We didn't make rules, we have to play in your rules.
Oh, I don't think anyone's blaming the developers.
No, I hear, I hear the conversation going, everybody's trying to maximize the dollar.
I don't see how that's blaming a developer though. I mean, that's, I mean, you're not going to disagree with me, are you, Mr. McLaughlin? I mean, obviously, at the end of the day, every, every developer's trying to maximize their profits.
I'm not, but I think staff has a really good handle on it. They're very open all the time to all of us builders and developers. I think they could give you quickly 10, 15 things they could change in those things without throwing it out and not considering it, because I think it needs to remain as an option for some of the challenging properties that are left.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the audience? Is she good then, Paul?
Yes.
All right, payroll bills.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the payroll and bills. I find it to be in order. I move it be approved as submitted.
Mr. Mutter.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's six, nothing. Correspondence, anything you want to touch on? Anybody have anything in the minutes they'd like to discuss?
When that correspondence, we got a letter from Paul Simmons. I, I sort of like, didn't we discuss this before?
Yes. And, and based upon that, and I had a discussion with the representative of EQT, because quite frankly, I think he misrepresents the township's position with regard to drilling. And I explained that to him. He's new at EQT and was unaware.
Yeah, because I mean, we ran some lines up the, off, from, from North Terbain, near the, the lake. I don't know how far up they went, but like, I don't even know how, if you could even get there from outside the township.
I was confused by the comments regarding the loot's pad. I don't think we opposed that at all, did we?
No, no. We have had, in fact, you have leases on properties.
That's what I thought.
And so he has it wrong. He's a new employee, and he's got it wrong.
Paul, back, back to the minutes. I have one question on the, the EQB minutes, the Big Tree Program. Now, what, where's this?
There's an existing Big Tree Program. You can, if you have a large tree, the EQB will come out and, and examine that and make a determination with regard to that. I mean, do you have anything you can add to that?
No, I mean, they're still looking for applicants for this year's program, so if you have people who have, I mean, trees of large size, historic nature, just advanced age, you know, they come out. Tom Trusaga and Blaze Hollitt specifically will come out and look at the trees and try to get a sense of their age and their worthiness for the program.
But if you get, if your tree qualifies for the Big Tree Program, that doesn't somehow like?
No.
Give your tree some sort of protection?
No, no, it's simply recognition.
You, you get notice from the EQB that it's a.
Okay, I was just curious.
I was gonna say, well, they cut it down, because I got some really war winning. It's the other, my backyard. It's the other way around.
I had a client in Swickley, he wasn't allowed to cut a tree down, it was grown over his house because it was enrolled in one of those programs, and they weren't allowed to cut it. So that's why I was curious.
You get a plaque from this program, that's all.
To the tree and kill it.
Right.
All right.
Well, what about, Tom, you'd ask about the police report, the last meeting.
I spoke to Chief Primes. He's going to be here next Monday for the budget hearing and is prepared to speak to that. His brief explanation to me is that, that it's, what you see is what occurs, and there isn't any single explanation that can, can explain why that giant jump in assaults in a one-month period. But he, he's going to be here next week and be prepared to discuss that.
Anything else in the minutes?
Did we get enough information out with regard to the burglaries that we'd had and the notices that the police was circulating with regard to concerns? Apparently those people have been apprehended, is that correct?
Well, the, the people that were apprehended had done one of the burglaries in town, but they were not necessarily the group that's been, been hitting the south hills. So I think those people still have not been, been found. So I think people need to stay alert and have doors locked, and to the extent that you have burglar alarms and things like that, that they should be set, so.
That's unfortunate. I thought the situation was different.
Well, that's what I had heard too, is my understanding, the guys they got were the...
They were the people who did the late, the most recent break-in in Peters Township. They recovered some of the jewelry that came out of that house.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And those were the 18-year-old and the two 15-year-olds?
Yeah.
I think if, if the residents notice anything unusual about somebody's house, they should. Like I called my neighbor in the back, because I noticed his back door was open all day.
Yes.
And it didn't look like they were home, and then I called him, and he's like, no, I'm home. I'm like, well, your back door's like wide open, I was afraid. He's like, no, what are you talking about? Go out there, it's been open all day. So I mean, I think just even picking up a phone and asking your neighbor, I mean, it can't hurt.
Yes.
All right, miscellaneous, you want to talk about the budget calendars and?
Well, I went up first, but we have our health insurance rates for 2023. We ended up with a 3% increase, which I, I believe to be favorable for the township, and so my intention is to find that insurance tomorrow. We had told you before that the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources encouraged us to apply for additional funding for the aquatics facility. That money came through, so the DCNR is now putting up a total of $1 million towards that project. So right now, there is grants in the vicinity of $3,200,000. One of the things I intend to do is, is to put on the agenda for the next meeting is the prequalification of bidders for the, for the Aquatic Center with the intent of sending the project out to bid. Council's already paid for the design to take it out the bid, and given that we now know how much assistance is out there to be had, and Ryan is nearing completion of the grant agreement, I think now's the time to, to begin the process of accepting bids, so that'll be on the next agenda.
Have we done anything to reach out to the pool contractors that, that, that was a source of the problem with the first set of bids?
We, we have, as part of the initial bid process, we went back and talked to the pool contractors, we went back and talked to the general contractors. There's been major modifications to, to the design based upon that input. We have proposed a series of alternates. We intend to add to that list so they give us as much flexibility as possible, so.
Paul, can we get more information on operations? Because I feel like that was the biggest part of the Aquatic Center that we did not have information for. So if we're getting to a point where we are sending the stuff out to bid, and you're going to... going to start asking for us to vote on this, I, I don't feel like we should be voting on this if we don't know those true operational costs.
And I agree with you 100%. So what we intend to do is begin this process, and as this is out to bid, but before we come to council with a request for a bid award, you'll have all of those operational costs. And then in addition to that, we are going to, once again, look at third-party management companies, and, and at least the one that was our preferred provider is still interested, and we want to have them sit down with council to talk about what's involved in that, so.
Thank you.
So that when you go to award the bid, you'll know everything there is, so.
Budget calendar?
Yeah, one of the things I circulated in the docket was the budget calendar. I sent it out as a separate email, but, you know, pretty much mimics what we have done in the past, which is two budget workshops with department heads. The first one is next Monday with Police, Fire, Recreation and Cable. The one on October 3rd is with Engineering, Public Works Planning and the Library. And then it's my belief we're going to need at least two, two workshops between council and, and myself to be able to, to make decisions with regard to the, to the budget, so.
Historically, how long do these budget workshops typically take?
They start at seven, and they generally last till 9:15, 9:30, something like that.
Okay.
Depends on how enthusiastic the department head is, if he's present, he's in our president.
Yeah. All right, I've already lined my mother up for the cookies, so.
That's the most important.
I know, so.
Well, I think that's a workable plan.
So that's it.
We have much choice.
So we're here every Monday till Halloween.
You get Halloween off. The, the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, Chief McLaughlin has been chosen by Pittsburgh Magazine and Pulp as one of the individual ones to be recognized this month in their 40 Under 40 magazine edition. So I think that's quite an honor for the chief. And kind of in a related thing, I would tell you that September 24th will be the open house at the fire department, which is always a well-attended event in town, so.
One, is that it? Okay, one item we wanted to discuss, I don't know, did you see Allison's email over the weekend about the football lighting?
I did.
So the president of P T J F A contacted me on Saturday night, asking, he had already talked with Michelle Harrell, asking for an extension because their games were going over time, and pretty much the whole day it happened, just because of overtimes or, you know, too many calls, whatever it was. So he was asking for an extension to stay, to continue the games, because they had a very large amount of people that were still there and wanting to, you know, finish the game since it had already started. So I didn't really know what to do, to be honest, like, that had never happened to me, so.
Well, one thing is that those particular sets of lights are manually controlled, so they have actual control over those.
Wait, so somebody physically went up there and shut the lights off while?
No, no, nobody shut the lights off.
So there's, the lights did go off multiple times?
Well, there was a problem, there's a problem with the lighting system, apparently, when they went, and, and I don't know exactly what the problem is.
Yeah.
But when they went to turn the lights on, they did not come on. And there was actually an electrician in the stand, and he came over and resolved that problem for them. But the township did not shut the lights off, because it's, it's manually set.
I don't think they thought that. At least, talking to Dan, he did not think that. They thought it was more of an issue versus being shut off.
It, it is, because, and again, there is, and this is actually set by council, at the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board, a policy with regard to the use of illumination in the park. And, and that goes back to the first set of lights that were installed in, in the park. I think, as I understand it, although I was not there all day on Saturday, my understanding there was just a number of things that compounded this all day long. In fact, one of the, the problems that I see in the, in the scheduling of these fields, is they're scheduled so that the games are back to back to back. In fact, I had a lady in today, she's a grandmother, who took her daughter, her granddaughter to, to cheer for one of the teams. And she tell, what she was telling me is that they're told to be there an hour before the, the game begins. So what that means is that you not only have to have parking for two football teams and two groups of cheerleaders, you need to have parking for four football teams and four groups of cheerleaders. And the day got so backed up that she was there for four hours. And she said by the time it was done, there were six football teams that needed to have parking, and six cheerleaders, and there was a picnic in Pavilion Number Four to boot. And so on top of everything else, and the, the extension of the lighting, the police department issued 32 tickets for parking on grass. And so it was not a good day at the park, you know, from that perspective.
So I did ask him, how can, so, you know, obviously, I said, I could try to get a hold of as many council members, because that is what Michelle told him, that he, she could not make that decision, that I had to, you know, we had to talk to council. So I tried to get as many people as possible, you know, with a short period of time. And then I talked to him the day, the next day and said, okay, how can we resolve this so it doesn't happen again, so you aren't in the same exact position that you've been in the last two weeks, technically? Because I think the first week they went over, not as late as this, but now this, you know, past week was pretty late. And, and he did say that they are revamping, he's going to a league meeting on Tuesday, and they are revamping, because what they, the original thought process was, is to do all, like, one township at a time. So every, every team plays Buffalo Park, for example, last weekend, or this past weekend. So then next weekend, whether it's at another township, that every team from Peters will play that township. So they're going to revamp that in hopes to not have this reoccurring issue.
Yeah, I think the one thing that they could do is actually start the games earlier. I mean, when you think about it.
Yeah, is there a limit on how, how early? I mean, I don't know when it started.
As I understand, I think the first game was at noon.
Oh.
And so they went from noon to almost 11 o'clock.
Almost 11 o'clock. So it's an hour past the ordinance?
So the ordinance is 10 o'clock?
Yeah.
10 o'clock.
The ordinance was 11, wasn't it?
No, the other ordinance is 10. And, and part of the rationale was, besides the concern about the neighbors and the lights and the noise, but part of the, the other part of the rationale was, you're dealing with young children. And the question was, what's an appropriate time? Because that time applies not only to football, it applies to everything in that park. And so some of the, sometimes there are games and practices that are occurring in that park during school nights. And so what's the right time to get kids home? And that's how 10 o'clock comes by.
I didn't realize it started, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the other thing, I mean, there was regular routine soccer going on that day, and the soccer boards got multiple complaints about it, thinking that it was the soccer association that caused this issue, but it's football, I'm sorry.
Doesn't offend me.
But, no, I mean, just thinking on how to approve, you know, improve this, we have a new assistant Parks and Rec, Ryan. I mean, I think this would be a great opportunity for him, because he's dealt with, you know, coming from his background, huge crowds, working in Allegheny County. So maybe we put him in touch with the, with the heads of each of these programs to see if he can help them organize some stuff.
Yes, I, I do believe that the simple solution is to start the games earlier.
And give more.
Allow a little time between the games, so that you're only having to park for two teams and two sets of cheerleaders. And I think that solves the parking problem. I think it also solves the lighting problem.
I agree.
Yeah, we also ought to look at it, though. I mean, if a game starts before 10, we should let them finish, quite honestly. I mean, they shouldn't be calling around looking for an extension. I mean, if they're in the third quarter at 10 o'clock, let them play. What are you going to do, have them come back the next day to finish the game? Does that apply to, so when they play baseball down at the bottom? If a game goes extra innings, they just, they stop at 10 o'clock?
They stop, yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I just think it would.
I can tell you, if you don't have a firm, and, and I don't care, council can do whatever they want, and if we want to have the lights on all night, I don't care. But I will tell you, if you don't have a fixed time, there will be an excuse for every reason why those lights stay on.
So maybe we just say they can stay on, you know, till 11 o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays or something like that?
And that's fine.
But then why is, like, the high school lights on all night?
Because it's the school district.
But that doesn't fall in the township ordinance?
Well, there is a limitation to the township ordinance, but I think it's later in the school district than it is for the township facility.
That's pretty bright.
Yeah, our, our, the group of people that we're dealing with are, tend to be younger children than, so. But if you want the, it's up to you. I think we're always better off asking the Park and Rec Board to look at these things and come up with recommendations and trying to do these on our own. But, but that's totally up to you. Council could take action on it any which way they want.
I think you should just make it 11 o'clock, period.
Frank, I, I have to disagree with you.
On Fridays and Saturdays.
Fridays and Saturdays, yeah. But if, but if a game is going on, let them finish the game. I mean, come, how much does it cost us to keep the lights on for 45?
It doesn't cost us anything, because we don't pay for the lights.
Right, exactly, that's my point. So who cares? I mean, you have these kids come back the next day to finish a game, I mean, it's ridiculous.
I don't know that any of you were here when we initiated the lights and the discussion of the property owners about the park.
I still remember playing there.
And I think, you know.
I remember playing there when we had to quit when it got dark, because there were no lights.
But I'm saying that the residents that surround the lighted fields do have a concern, and they, they filled this room more than once, I think, to complain, so.
And that's why. And the other thing that we got was, when, when it was set at 10, we had a number of parents call us, who said, thank you for setting it at 10, because I couldn't say that to the, to the association for fear that my child would be, would not, would be affected. So I, I don't know, whatever you pick is, is fine.
I don't, I don't, I wouldn't want to play at 10 anyways.
Yeah, I think you leave it at 10 o'clock, and you have Parks and Rec Director, Assistant Director work with the organizations to improve their processes.
Okay.
I wasn't bringing it up, I was bringing it up to explain, I wasn't bringing it up to change the time.
But, but I will tell you this, Ms. Shinnelfeld, if you get stuck, and there is something that you need, you should never hesitate to call me.
Okay.
Okay? That's not a problem.
They shouldn't have the other team there, cheerleaders, an hour before the start time. I mean, that's just ridiculous.
Well, it, it's the problem, that's what's the problem in Peterswood Park. If you look at the amount of parking.
No, I understand, I mean, I understand.
It's outrageous.
I mean, it's almost they, they can warm up on the field until the other game's over.
Do they do that in case the game, the previous game gets done quicker, or what? Is that the idea?
I don't know, but an hour, I mean, how's it going to get done an hour quicker?
I have one other thing. Got a letter from Melissa Richardson about that, the cell tower, potential cell tower in Peterswood Park. And the only thing she brought up that made me just curious, if, if the cellular companies ever talk about this, what's the difference between 5G and our, what we have right now, I guess, would be 4G? It's, is it an increased amount of coverage?
No, it's actually less.
Right?
Yeah, it's actually, the, the, the 5G towers cover smaller areas.
Right.
What they have the ability to do is transmit more data.
So like, more surveillance is what?
So this tower, I guess, would be a 4G tower.
Okay.
So where we are with regard to this, I, I had a chance to talk to Verizon to find out if, in fact, we can work out a deal for them to co-locate, are they interested? They're to get back to me by the end of this week to tell me whether it's actually an area where they're interested. I also had an opportunity to sit down with an individual from Crown Castle, and they're going to get back to me. His initial impression of this, having looked at it briefly, is that that's not the best location for them. The best location for them is actually over on Bauer Hill, in the vicinity of the, of the elementary school. But he, he said before I tell you that, give us a chance to be able to review that. So I would hope before, before we have our next meeting, I'll be able to answer that question as well. But my intention is, if, if, I can't get an answer for Verizon, or if Verizon's not interested in that location, to bring forward that lease for AT&amp;T, so that in fact, we can at least address that.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything for their next agenda?
Any of you have any comments about my proposed junior council person program?
Well, just in favor of it.
All right, can you put it on your next agenda, Paul, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? We have an executive session?
Nope.
Okay.
We don't?
Yeah, meeting's adjourned.